Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our August 13th Village Board Meeting. Thank you all for coming. Again, I would like to express my apologies for what we're still going through renovation and the offices and everything is tore up and disarray, but believe me, I think there's light at the end of the tunnel and we'll eventually, we'll all get there. So appreciate your cooperation in that. I'd like to lead off with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First on our agenda is our county legislator, Brendan Cairn.
Good evening, everybody. Sit down. I can project. I mean, it's not a problem. Yeah, it's all right. Am I losing my color? Righty-tighty. Okay. Good evening. Hope everybody's having a nice summer. We had legislative session last night and we did a couple of things that I'm quite pleased about. I co-sponsored a local law that we approved last night establishing canine tethering, establishing canine tethering regulations. So these sort of spell out for people what a reasonable amount of time is for a dog to be tethered, what kind of food and water needs to be provided to the dog if it's long-term shelter. And of course, this was really an attempt to just sort of improve on conditions for dogs in the county and to avoid abuse whenever possible. Along the same line, I also co-sponsored and re-approved the establishment of an animal abuse registry. And that will be a list of offenders who are convicted for those sort of crimes or misdemeanors. I'm not sure. I guess crimes. And it will be maintained by the sheriff's office. It will be online. So again, hopefully that will deter people from acting in that way. For Reinbeck specifically, we approved an agreement between New York State and the county to assume ownership and maintenance of some improvements that they will be making to River Road as part of the Empire State Trail. So there will be some traffic calming measures. Let's see what else there was I wanted to tell you. Parking, let's see, pavement markings, traffic calming measures, and signs. So along the part of River Road that's in Reinbeck, the county, it is a county road, will be taking over those to support the Empire State Trail. And finally, we approved funding, bonding for the construction of the Duchess County, Duchess Community College educational facility that is going to be constructed and conducted at the Hudson Valley Regional Airport, which I think is very, very important for the economy of Duchess County and for our residents. And hopefully, we'll actually bring residents from other communities to participate at Duchess Community College. Work next month for the September meeting will continue our work for establishing an independent redistricting commission. Again, this is very near and dear to my heart for parity in elections in drawing election districts, so I will continue to work on that. And finally, I know you all have heard this many times, but the Are You OK! program, which I was so determined to have up and running again, it's a check-in program for the elderly or infirm in Duchess County, is now going to be back up and running. Anyone who's interested in registering, it's a free program to be checked on once a day by phone call, and then it triggers an actual physical check-in if necessary, is through the Duchess County Department of Aging. So very happy that that's going to be happening again. So that's the doings at the county level. Enjoy the rest of the summer.
Brendan, I have a question.
Sure.
Regarding the Are You OK! program.
Yep.
Is it back up and running?
You can register, and they say it's back up and running.
So they would contact Duchess County Department of Aging to register?
Yep. And then the sheriff's office actually administers it, so they're the ones who do it, but contact the Department of Aging to sign up. And I'm going to be doing some outreach, hopefully with some local organizations, to make people aware, because it turned out, even though we were upset that the program had ended when we learned about it, I believe there were only like 12 Duchess County residents signed up for it. And I think it's a really important resource that more people want to know about. So I'm really excited to talk about it here on camera and to let people know. So please, and if anyone needs help registering for that, you can contact me. I am very happy to help facilitate that. I think it's a great county resource we have.
And they can contact you how?
They can contact me at B. Kearney, K-E-A-R-N-E-Y, at DuchessNY.gov, or you can simply call me, 646-773-1905. And Pat, I'm sure would happily put you in touch with me. Thanks, Pat.
Brendan?
Yeah?
Before you sit down.
Oh, sure.
So something you and I have been exchanging email on.
Yes.
I would like, while we have your undivided attention, the Community Development Block Grant, which recently was voted in. And just for everybody to know, we submitted a Community Development Block Grant as part of an ADA improvement to improve our crosswalks. Our crosswalk at the Wantafred alone and the crosswalk down at Terrapin, just shy of $50,000 to put in ADA, what we felt was ADA improvements in terms of lighting, sound, et cetera, which we actually, you know, worked very closely with our engineering firm and worked very closely with the Department of Transportation, and we were not approved by the county for this grant.
Which was really disappointing.
Yes. So my question to you is, what I wanted out of this was a critique of the grant.
Yes.
And the critique we got was basically full circle to go back and talk to the county Mark Vold at County Transportation again.
Yes.
Which we had spoken to and we thought and felt that we had his approval. So I'm not sure how.
Can I help?
Yeah.
Well, I hope I can help in the future. So next time we do this, let's pair up. And I don't know what to say about the critique that the response that we received was that one of the measures was sort of ADA and the second measure was not ADA. Let's work on it next time so that I can be an advocate for it.
Well, I would like to find out how we can find the right grant application to submit that into the county. If it didn't fit into this category, which we, everybody felt it did from an ADA improvement.
So you want to go forward with these improvements again?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
I would like to have your help.
I would love to help.
I mean, I'll read the letter from the county.
Do, please. I was going to go get my phone and read it.
Dear Mayor Bastid, thank you for applying to the 2019 Municipal Innovation Grant Program. We received 22 applications requesting more than $3 million in funding compared to availability of $1.1 million. Unfortunately, the above referenced project was not recommended for funding by our Community Development Advisory Committee, which I'm happy to learn who they are so that we could reach out to them.
Sure. Hold on. Can I borrow your pen?
Yes.
Duchess County appreciates the work governmental partners had the time of effort expanding on the grant process. If you have any questions about this funding decision, please contact Kristi Beno, which we did. We worked through Kristi. So my other question is, they held $1.1 million, but they distributed $112,000. So.
Now that's, can I get my phone for a second?
Yeah. Because I received another community.
Yeah, I don't think that's correct, Mr. Mayor.
No, well, in this block grant, they distributed $112,000.
Because we did see an email, and what I thought was curious was that most of the award money went to a small number of applicants.
Yes.
Yeah, six actually got about 80% of the money. But that email did indicate it was about $1.1 million.
Yeah, there was another email that they sent. Here we go. Hold on. Okay, so let's, so you got this one too, Brendan? The one saying, well, explaining their concerns about the, how it met with ADA improvements. But you're right, it doesn't, it does not give us more information about how much.
Well, it did. There was an email that distributed that listed all of the applicants. So anyways, but it'd be nice to know in the future, I guess.
Of course it would.
If we're asked if there, how much money is available within each one of the grants. Like, there's a new one now, the Community Development Block Grant for the low-income area of places.
Yes.
It doesn't state how much money is available, right? You know, so maybe we.
Why don't I follow up on that? And then why don't we get together and strategize how I can help support the grant? Surely, there's a way I can.
We as a village, you know, need to be able to be competitive in this position.
Of course. And it takes time and effort to develop the proposal, so then for it not to be awarded is frustrating. Not just frustrating, but it's not a great use of time if you're, if they're wanting one thing and you're applying for another. No, I would be delighted to work with. I would be delighted to work with the village on that.
Karen and Brendan?
Yes.
Hi. So actually, the last sentence of that email says, "We should reach out and look to Mark Vold."
Yes.
And maybe we can get him to come up to Reinbeck to actually survey the conditions, to see if he has any recommendations of things that we should be doing first. Seems like he may be one of the people who are, who is in the decision.
And we did. We consulted with him on this grant.
Which we ran him up to the village.
Yeah.
Have him walk down.
I'd be happy to invite him to do that if that's what you'd like.
Next time we have a grant, let's do it.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Brendan.
I guess I should remind everybody that Trustee Lewis is participating privately, and therefore, he is on the screen here. And this is a legitimate process for him to be able to still participate in our Village, in our Little Four meeting. Okay. Next, we're going to go into, we have no presentations, into the treasurer's report.
Okay. Good evening. The treasurer's report is for the period ending July 31st. The tax collector's account ended the month with $1,562,027.04. The general fund ended the month with $70,784.64. The water fund with $239,827.52. And the sewer fund with $463,061.24. Vouchers presented for payment in the general fund total $225,313.51. In the water fund, $40,413.69. In the sewer fund, $28,583.36. And a bill for the Village Hall ADA lift grant was presented in the amount of $47,951.35. There was one escrow payment paid in the amount of $975.52 and an interest on a bond of $1,460. An operating statement is provided with revenues and expenditures through today, August 13th. The water and wastewater billings and adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the Water and Wastewater Liaisons and are presented for authorization.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the water adjustments as submitted.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the wastewater figures that's presented this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Karen.
Okay. Budget amendments presented. There's one budget transfer from the capital fire to the general fund for $13,462 for radios that were ordered in 1819 and received in the 1920 fiscal year. I have trans, I have budget amendments for grants for records management, the Village Hall ADA, to record the grants for the revenue and expenditures in the new budget year because they were not, they were not used in the previous budget year. We received the Frost Grants for the Jaws of Life and the Tree Inventory. However, we received the funds in 1819 and the purchases will be made in this current year, so I'm also asking for a budget amendment for those, as well as the lower lift pump station and the Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority study. I have one budget amendment in the sewer department to transfer $2,000 from supplies to repair and maintenance.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the budget amendments as presented by the treasurer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
And finally, I'd like to report that the fiscal year 1819, year-end close, is complete as of May 31st, 2019, and the New York State Annual Report was filed with the Comptroller's And with that.
Understood.
Okay. So with that, I have a little recap of the financial condition of the village.
John, can you turn that van off over there, please?
So, good evening. I'd like to report that the fiscal condition of the Village of Reinbeck is positive. The past year has been active and productive with the completion of numerous pending capital projects. Before I report the fund balance amounts, let's recap this past year. With the fund balance on the high side of the fund balance policy threshold, there were available funds to complete the following essential capital improvements. The wastewater collection and storage tank at the Village Highway Garage in the amount of $9,452. The watch guard police car cameras in the amount of $30,613. The solar radar speed signs, $8,878. The Village Hall underground oil tank removal and above-ground replacement, $10,000. A 2019 Freightliner leaf vac truck making the first payment of five in the amount of And our current project here at the Village Hall, the ADA handicap accessible lift, for $67,000. These projects were funded with unreserved fund balance. At the fiscal year-end, May 31st, 2019, the fund balances were as follows. In the general fund, $954,295, of which $345,536 is above the fund balance policy recommended threshold. The water fund ended the fiscal year with $973,025. And the sewer fund ended the fiscal year with $976,250. It's important to convey that fund balance is in that position and takes into account cash, receivables, payables, due-to, due-froms, pending grants, and transfers of capital projects. Maintaining a healthy fund balance is an ongoing challenge with the 2% tax cap, union negotiations, and increasing cost of supplies, equipment, and services. So your taxes and revenue. This chart breaks down the revenues. I draw your attention to mortgage tax, state aid, CHIPS, and grant, weighing in at 9% of the total piece of the revenue pie. The village board works diligently to keep property taxes as low as possible by exploring other sources of revenue such as grants, cell tower, rental franchise fees, and making the most of funds through prudent cash management. Expenses, your tax dollars. This chart shows expenses by departments, and please note that each department includes their share of employee benefits and long-term debt for that department. So for instance, the police department includes the debt relating to the building of the police station, and the fire department, all of their long-term debt on their equipment So in addition to tracking revenue and expenses, we watched fund balance trends. The above chart shows a decrease in the general fund balance as the completion of the earlier mentioned capital projects reduced the fund balance, bringing it closer to the recommended range of 25% of the subsequent budget. The decrease in the fund balance in the water fund was due to a transfer out of $250,000, which was allocated to the water main upgrade project. The sewer fund balance increased as a result of a change in personnel and reduced spending in the past year. So finally, the village maintains capital reserve accounts for the fire, highway, police, village office, parking, parks, and sidewalk. The police department's balance decreased as this past year they purchased a police vehicle from their capital reserve account. The fire department maintains a greater balance as their equipment purchases are much larger. After the annual report is filed, a five-year history report is available from the New York State Comptroller's Office. I use this as a tool to communicate with the board, the past trends, and anticipate future forecasts. As a member of the New York State Conference of Mayors and Municipal Officials and the New York State Society of Municipal Finance Officers, I am constantly updated on changes in state and local legislation. Also, as vice chair of the Downstate Council for the New York Government Finance Officers, I am kept up to date on banking and private sector changes that affect public entities like our village. The village is your, the residents, businesses, and taxpayers. It's your company. You are the investors, and it is our fiduciary responsibility to manage, maintain, and report to you the financial condition of the Village of Reinbeck, a task I do not take lightly. My strategy has always been to maintain open communication with the department heads, the board, and the residents. Be open to suggestions, be willing to change what's not working, and make what is working better. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Do we have any questions for Karen? This is a significant thing every, that she accomplishes every year to help pull our budgets together and present them so that we can have a greater understanding and, you know, present that to you, the village residents, as well.
You're all set with me? Thank you.
Yep. Not yet.
Is this report going to be on the Village website?
Yes.
Thank you.
May I ask Karen a quick question? Your very first slide, if I did the math right, and I'm not saying that I did, looks like the fund balance were about 34% above.
Yes, probably right there, yes.
So my question really is, that's 34%. That's healthy, and that's about nine points above the recommended 25%.
Correct.
Now, that's not reflecting, we know, because it's been reported, that we're going to have some overruns with the lift project, and that's going to eat into that 34%. But we're still going to be very comfortably above the 25, but we are trending closer to the 25.
Correct. That, yes, that's.
So the board just needs to be.
And that was at, you know, I mean, it hasn't changed much, but that was at a point in time of May 31st, 2019.
And at the time, I don't have the numbers on the chart, but it looks like we're 300-plus-thousand over, above the recommended.
Correct. Yeah, we still are.
So we have 300,000 above the recommended.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand, is it 300,000, so that would, on a base of a million, 300,000 is roughly 30%, and we should be 25% above.
Right.
So we're, so we're, Mr. Mayor, you're right, but we're, you know, we're hovering only five percentage points higher than where we should be.
I'm not sure I understand, because we passed a fund bound policy that says we should be at like 625,000, somewhere around that.
Right.
Our fund balance, we should not go below the 625,000.
Right.
And today, we're at, I don't know, 900, whatever Karen reported, 900 and somewhat thousand.
So that's, that's the delta, right? That's where you get the 25%.
Right.
So that's less than 25%.
No, the 25% is on the.
Oh, it's built into that?
No, the 25% is on the subsequent budget, which is the new budget, which is 2.416 million. So it, the, so the 25% of fund balance is on the new budget, and that gives the board time to determine whether they need to make any changes moving forward into the current.
Okay. Again, I was working off the, I don't know if we can go back to that first chart.
Yeah, maybe I didn't, maybe I should have explained a little clearly that the 25%.
Oh, yeah, you have, yeah, can you go to the first page? Not the, not the graphics, just the narrative?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so general fund, 954,000, which 345 is above the fund balance. I'm saying, well, that's about 35%. Of the 954.
Right.
Right? So when we would not want to be less than 25%.
Right.
So we're 10% better than where we should be, but we are going to eat cannibalize a little bit of that because we know we have some additional money, bills yet to be paid after March, after May 31st.
Yes.
Okay. That's all.
For the.
I'm working off that number. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Next on the agenda is police and court. Give me one second to get to that. I'm going to do the court revenue first. June court summary, tickets that were completed for both court sessions and mailed in for the month was 148, for a total revenue to the state of $4,553. For the police, total number of visitors in the town was 16, total number of incidents in the village, 125, total number of tickets to town, 27, total number of tickets to the village, 98, total number of arrests, 11, total number of accidents, 15, and extra coverage was provided for the Bloom Fest and for, excuse me, the Rockin' River event. I'd also like to report from a court perspective, it doesn't stand up. The Town of Reinbeck initiated a shared court study. That shared court study, the bids were due last week, and they were opened by the Town of Reinbeck. We received five shared court study reports from businesses, which I have here on the desk, that will be in the village court's office if anybody would like to review. The Benjamin Center was 300,000, Pattern for Progress, 500,000, excuse me, Benjamin Center, 30,000, Pattern for Progress, 50,000, CGR, 48,900, Le Burge Group, 39,390, and NCS, 68,000. The next step in this process is for the village and town to form a joint committee to review the applications and then write a recommendation back to the boards. This is a, if you remember back from a month ago, we approved consolidating with a court study with the village and Town of Reinbeck in addition to the village and the town. study with the village and town of Rhinebeck in addition to the village and the town of Reddell. So I'm not sure, we have to select the same one, but that will be determined by the committee group that we work with. Any questions on that? And I got myself out of sequence here. I apologize. Because I want to get to an IMA, but I have one.
I have a hard copy, too, I'm kidding.
It would be good, because I lost my navigation here to it. Thank you. Currently, the, the village of Rhinebeck has an IT department, which is managed and administered by PCA. PCA takes care of the village, but separately from that, our village police and our village court run independently from those and have their own. The company that manages that process has now been dissolved into the Auster County BOCs. And since they're devolved, they're now part of Auster County BOCs, what we need to do is approve an IMA that works with them. So this IMA is their report back to us to, on their costs associated with doing it. We are working also with PCA to submit another proposal, so we have something to compare. But as of today, the court has, does not have any support for IT problems, because their, people that took care of it have now been combined into BOCs. So I look at this as maybe temporary, but could be permanent depending on the report that we get from PCA in terms of the, what we get back. So what I would like to do is propose for today, the IMA that is in front of us with Auster County BOCs, and the resolution, since it's a resolution versus a contract, like we would have with PCA, because it follows the same thing, with, with, with them. So I can read the whole thing, but it's basically, this agreement is by and between Auster Board of Cooperative Education Services, a Board of Cooperative Educational Services, with principal offices located in Route 175, Route 32 in New Paltz, New York, hereafter known as BOCs, and the village of Rhinebeck, a municipal corporation and with principal offices located at Village Hall at Rhinebeck, New York. Whereas the BOCs and local municipalities all require technical services with workstations, firewall, et cetera, whereas the combining technical services needs these various. And I'm going, I don't know if we need to go through every act of this resolution, I'll put it up here for you to read. But the net is, the really, that is, when we get down to the agreement, and the Schedule A is really the services that are brought into place, and the services are part of Schedule A of this, of this report, which says, they cite survey as the completed in effort of better understanding of technology and landscape of the customer environment, where they will come in and evaluate the number of workstations, number of servers, operating system in use, conform to presence of any antivirus, review our network, and layout and note any equipment locations, perform basic internal, internal and external court scans. So they also provide remote support, and they have hours of operation, which run from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM Monday through Friday, excluding time when BOCs is closed due to weather. And they have off-hour support as well to support this. So I would like to have a motion to approve this IMA with Auster County BOCs for the support of our police, only and only the police station at this time. We would do the court separately with a separate IMA, because they're two separate fundamental principles that won't, don't share the same thing.
Didn't seem like there was a fee schedule on there. Well, that was.
The fee schedule is.
I didn't see it either.
All right, I'm reading from here. Support is, the support service we build in advance at a rate equivalent of a 30-hour block at $75 an hour, for initial payment of $2,250. The amount will be decremented as services are rendered according to the schedule. Once exhausted, the municipality will be billed for an additional amount equivalent in five-hour blocks at 75 hours or $375 for their services.
And, Mr. Mayor, it looks like there is a, an exit ramp for us, because you mentioned if PCA comes up with an alternative proposal, 30 days notice and we.
We can cancel.
Yeah, sure, that's very good, yeah.
We have, we have a 30-day notice.
Yeah, that's good.
We have something better.
So we can amend that Schedule A to incorporate that fee schedule that you just read?
Yeah, it should be, I thought I saw it in here, and I apologize for, why it's not in the IMA, because it was part of their schedule attachment. And I don't see it attached, so it somehow fell off the upload.
So I wouldn't be comfortable.
But it is part of, it is part of the.
They do reference it in Section 13, Schedule A and Schedule B.
Yeah, but Schedule A doesn't have it in there, so if we just incorporate that memo into, as an amendment to Schedule A. You see what I mean?
Oh.
Yeah, because it needs to be.
So I make a motion that we do that.
Okay.
What I just said.
So is it to approve the IMA with Auster County BOCs for the police department, including that cost, including that paragraph?
That fee, paragraph to be amended, incorporated into Schedule A or something like that.
I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? It's okay, thank you. Thank you, Brian. Next, we're going to go into the fire department report. Do we have none?
No.
No fire department reports?
Nope.
Okay, we'll skip that. Building, planning, and zoning. I don't think we have.
No report for that either. Oh, yes, there was, Ryan gave it to me, sorry.
Is it up here?
Sorry.
Let me back up.
I stand corrected, Ryan, sorry.
Yes, we do have one. Number 30 Korchak, I'll read this into the record. Planning, zoning, and building, July month report fees for the month of 2019, this month 2019. Building apartment, four CO municipal searches for $600, building permits 750, fire, no fire inspections for $0. Planning board, escrow, zero, fees and approvals, 250, and fire, zero. So total of $1,600. Now we're at the point of this Schedule Four, All That Java, okay? So at this time, I would like to ask All That Java to board. And if you want to, please step up to the microphone.
I prefer to sit here.
No, please step up to the microphone. Tell us, everybody, who you are.
Can you hear me? Yes, I'm Samantha Sapienza.
Yeah.
I know most of you. Hi, John.
Yeah.
Ryan.
Rich.
I'm the owner and founder of All That Java. As you may or may not know, All That Java was approved on March 1st, 2016, by the village planning board to operate as a retail business in the village of Rhinebeck. For the last three years, we have operated our tiny coffee house at the 6579 Springbrook Avenue property. We have built a loyal following of hundreds of customers. With good reason, we recently relocated to 83 East Market Street to collaborate with the Rhinebeck United Methodist Church as they move to reinvigorate their church that has been sitting dormant for the last three years. With the blessings of the new husband and wife ministers and the United Methodist Cabinet, we moved there with the understanding that churches were exempt from zoning laws. We have since learned that this is not the case. Our attorney, Sean Kemp, has been in contact with Rich Olson, your attorney, and John Fenton, the zoning enforcement officer, to determine the best steps moving forward, including exactly what permit or zoning change we should be applying for. So we are not here to discuss this application that we put in. But we would like to share who we are as people. We're not lawbreakers. We'd also like to share with you the idea of our tiny coffee house and the love our customers have for All That Java. I love Rhinebeck. That's why I moved here seven years ago, and that's why I wanted to open my business here. I live at 36 Chestnut Street on the corner of Chestnut and Mulberry. I'm raising three boys in that house, one is now in college, one in high school, and one in middle school. My mom and 99-year-old grandmother live on South Street, and my sister lives in the Village Greens. We are true members of the community. After growing up in the Hudson Valley, I lived outside Seattle for 15 years. Those tiny coffee houses are everywhere. I'd visit my mom in Rhinebeck and wonder why the idea never made it back. And I thought someday I'm going to open my own tiny coffee house right here in Rhinebeck, and in 2016, the timing was right, and I did. All That Java now has a huge and very passionate following. Maybe Mayor Bassett shared the 80-plus letters addressed to him and the 200-plus signatures that we have on our petition.
I gave them to our village clerk.
They've been scanned, they've been, yes, they've been shared.
Great, excellent.
That was just today.
That was just today, yep, but on your, on your desk. I'd love to share some of those with you. This is from our own town highway superintendent, Barry, I think he's here. Dear Mayor Bassett, we love All That Java. Please let them stay. I love my Java, and it is good energy for the entire community. Sincerely, Barry. Dear Mayor Bassett, we love All That Java. I love the village of Rhinebeck, and I love All That Java. Like our lovely village, it is original and has so much heart. Please allow them to continue to operate. Independent, unique businesses like this one make our village a joy to live in. Sincerely, Paula H. Powell. Dear Mayor Bassett, we love All That Java. After working long nights at Northern Duchess Hospital, All That Java's wonderful coffee gets me home safe. Signed, the RNs and tech of Northern Duchess Hospital. Dear Mayor Bassett, we love All That Java. Small businesses are the heart and soul of every small town. As mayor, you are so privileged to be able to witness dreams become a reality. This coffee house is unique and special and so loved. Please allow our lovely coffee house to stay. Sincerely, Kelly Lewis. Dear Mayor Bassett, we love All That Java. All That Java expands the walkability of the village, gives residents more options, and diffuses the congestion of the center of the village. Sincerely, Amanda Miller. I could go on and on, I have 80-plus letters, but I think you get the idea. And I hope that every board member will be able to read each and every letter that our Java lovers have written. It is truly overwhelming to me, and I am very proud. I've always said it's not about the coffee, it's about making that moment perfect for our customers and making it as positive and uplifting as it can be. And of course, the coffee is amazing. All That Java loves Rhinebeck, and you can see how much Rhinebeck loves All That Java. I'm hopeful that with the village of Rhinebeck and All That Java, along with our lawyers, Rich Olson and Sean Kemp, we can find a solution for moving forward, and I'm asking for your support to do that. Thank you.
So you are not asking for the board to make a recommendation on the zoning?
Right. Do you want me to stay here?
Well.
Sean's in the process of talking to Rich.
I appreciate if he's up there, some people can hear you, and it's all on record, so if you, Patrick, if you want to speak, please join Samantha, so you're on the camera.
Sean and Rich are having conversations to determine exactly, exactly what is the right path forward. Is this the correct path? I don't know.
We're meeting, they're meeting later this week to discuss that, so.
So currently, you understand that the residential area is not zoned for this business, right? So that operating, that an operation in that spot is not allowed, right?
We understand that.
Okay, so.
But you brought it to the court, and the court has ruled that we are allowed to stay open while we apply for these permits.
I don't.
That's outside of the scope of what we interpret.
So again, we're not here, the lawyers are involved now, and we've been told that they are going to take care of it. And so we just wanted to, to let you know who we are.
Okay. But just in regard to the zoning, I'm not, I can't speak for the other board members, but I can speak for myself that, you know, a lot, continuing to operate in that space without the approvals is against the village regulations.
But we're trying to get those approvals.
And Judge John Kane said that we can stay open while we go through that process.
I don't know that that was the board's understanding, yeah.
Yeah, so I, is that, I don't, John, excuse me, John, are you close to enough to the, is that a factual statement?
No.
So is John Fenton, zoning enforcement officer?
So I can only really speak on the facts. Presently, it's a retail business operating in a residential zone district. A cease and desist order had been requested, but the local justice doesn't have the authority to grant a cease and desist. Presently, it is in litigation, and Judge Kane suggested that the applicants find a alternative way to try to operate. There is a few avenues that they can entertain, but there hadn't been anything directly set by the judge. He did, the applicant did decide to possibly change the use chart or request the village board to change the use chart. That's the last recorded discussion we have in court. The judge suggested that the applicant seek the change in front of the village board tonight, and that a update report is to be given from me to the court tomorrow on the status.
Since the lawyers have gotten involved, they've advised us.
Okay, so with respect to, so I've been on the email chain between their attorney and the village's attorney, and so their attorney had suggested that we meet this Friday. I don't have a dead-set appointment yet, but they're trying to meet this Friday to speak on other possible avenues. I can't speak on behalf of the attorney, because he only chimed in on one email stating that he wouldn't meet on Friday. And that's all I have. So the only thing that I have right now is tomorrow morning, I'm supposed to report to the court to basically state that the applicants did not request a zone change, and our next court hearing is August 28th. And that's where we're at. The cease and desist order that came from me had been originally granted on August 1st, but then Judge Kane found out that they didn't have the authority to basically grant that. Even though he did approve it, he withdrew the request the next day.
My, my understanding is that that would have to go through the Supreme Court.
Correct, correct.
With our attorney, with counsel for us, so.
So as of right now, again, sustaining the facts, I have to report to the court of tonight's meeting, to the judge, and unfortunately, as, as time goes on, I have been advised by our attorney that if the business is in operation, that a ticket is to be written per day per violation. The local judicial system only has the authority to levy fines. So that's where we're at.
John, is Judge Kane expecting you in court tomorrow morning to give an answer that either this board approved a zoning change or not, regardless of the underlying reason?
Yeah, no, we don't have a scheduled court date, but I am to update the court clerk of the findings from tonight's meeting.
And so the findings from tonight are there is no application?
There had been, so.
The application has been withdrawn that was submitted to the village board.
Correct.
Because.
I just want to make sure.
Because your attorney.
Because your attorney and our attorney are in a conversation to see what's the best path moving forward. Is that this, or is it some other way?
Well, again, I can't speak on behalf of our attorney, but just reviewing the emails, it basically looked like Sean Kemp, their attorney, had been reaching out to our attorney to set up a meeting. We haven't discussed any avenue, any... As far as I know, I personally know the position of our attorney, and I don't want to speak on behalf of that. But I think this was the avenue that they were sticking to because the judge recommended that.
I think I'm going to make a recommendation to the board, and I would like to make a... Have a motion on this, is that the village of Rhinebeck does not extend a rezoning approval at this time for All That Java in this... To operate at this place. My motion is that we don't go into a rezoning application unless specified by the courts.
I wouldn't add that last...
Yeah, I would just say, Mr. Mayor, that we're not going to entertain zoning.
Rezoning.
And I would second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
Well, as Judge Kane said, then we will proceed to August 28th court to discuss that. That's what he told us on July 17th.
That's outside the scope of what we...
Yeah, one second. Yeah. I just want to get this motion out, and then I'll... So we have a first, we have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Trusty Lloyd?
Yeah. I have a question. Is it... Did you get a motion, or is it better to send to... In other words, vote on that. It's a little hard to make a... Something that...
We're not following...
It's breaking up.
Okay. The question I have, is it better to do a motion around...
It's worse.
Can't hear you. Can't understand you. All right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Obstained? All right, so let's carry.
What did Rick vote? Did he vote?
Rick, did you vote?
Um, yeah, but I...
Okay. You guys sit down. Someone entertain other comments, please. Thank you. I understand. Somebody, you want to comment? Please come to the microphone.
I'll make it simple and concise. As she stated a couple of years ago, we approved the All That Java to operate at the Tac Shop. They left the Tac Shop, and for the last two months, they have been operating illegally in the business district without ever coming to the planning board, and they are familiar with the planning board process. At our last planning board meeting, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend to the mayor and the village board that this business cease operation. If they find another location, they can make an application to the planning board. There are other sites they could move to. There are certainly many vacant stores in the village. You could open a legitimate coffee shop in the business district. But if we allow businesses to operate in the residential district, we will destroy the village. That's my personal, though, not planning boards.
Yes?
I have a question.
Come on up.
I live on 93 East Market Street. I walk that sidewalk every single day to Brett Alone to get my coffee. And on two occasions, I've been nearly run over by cars flying in to get All That Java coffee. It must be awfully good if they're going to go that fast. And since I am handicapped at the moment, I have to walk very slowly. So anyway, I have a question for the board. Is there anything that precludes you from actually getting your attorney to file to the Supreme Court to ask that this thing be removed?
There is. We're going to leave that up to the attorney right now.
Okay. But he could do that.
Yes, he could.
Okay, thank you.
Tim Decker, I live on Livingston Street. Is the board going to encourage the attorney to pursue that avenue?
Well, we voted tonight not to endorse zoning.
Okay, but that doesn't provide the...
So my question is where the baton goes from enforcement to the village board? I don't want to step on the shoes of the zoning enforcement office because there's supposed to be a firewall.
Right.
So that's... I would want double counsel from my counsel.
As I understand it, since the attorney would need the authorization of the village board to...
I don't under... I don't know.
...board in terms of...
If that's true, then we'll get to that point.
Right, okay. I mean, I just want to make sure that there's nothing to preclude that happening sooner rather than later, given the fact that this is a clear violation of the village zoning law.
If he advises us that it is out of the zoning enforcement office, then we'll take the appropriate next move.
Okay. Thank you.
Samantha, you want to comment? Any other comments? Hearing no other comments? Thank you for coming to the board, and we'll move on.
I have a quick question. Do you want me to go first?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Next time, we have to tell Brennan not to raise the mic so high. Everybody can use it. Thanks, Tim.
Thanks.
Thank you. I only want to say a couple of things.
Your name, please.
My name is Gloria Fox, and I live in Rhinebeck. You want my address?
No.
So I just want to say one thing. I was reading about this, you know, I was reading about... And it's a food truck. Is that correct? It's not a food truck because it doesn't have any cooking or anything like that. What I want to say, though, is that this industry represents $3 billion annually in our country. It's a $3 billion business. And it really does bring... It really does help to bring people into the community and gather. And that's what communities are built on, gathering and enjoying. And I really enjoy that I'm going to run into my neighbors there or people that I don't know and meet. I've met a lot of very interesting people there. I'm not a fan of... I'm not going to... I'm not a fan of Brett Alone, and I'm not a fan of Samuel's, even though I knew Ira for a very long time, and I get my cookies still there. So I'm not saying... What I... My second question is, perhaps, if this nice young couple wanted to park their food truck in their driveway and sell coffee, could they?
No.
Not in the residential district. But yet, we allow people to rent their houses to people and...
No.
Not here, not in town? We allow lots of things. People have businesses from their home. Business massage therapists. There are facialists. There are a whole bunch of people.
They have retail.
Review the code.
No, I'm just saying, I am not arguing about the code. I'm saying that... I'm not... I'm not saying anything about the code. I'm just saying that things change, things happen. People try... This all started in 2008 and when people tried to recover from the down surge in business. In 2008, people had to make a living, and they had to do things that perhaps... And I'm not talking about the zoning. I'm just saying we have to be a little bit more open-minded about things and try to figure out solutions. Obviously, these people are not trying to annoy anybody or be objectionable. They're very nice people, and I just want to say that. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Sam, wait one second. I didn't see you raise your hand. Naina had raised her hand before, so...
Naina Lynch. I live in Rhinebeck. I got a call at 4:30 from a gentleman named Marty Rosenblum. I think he's been in touch with you. He's a neighbor, a resident. He lives on Livingston Street, right behind All That Java. And he heard that I might be at the meeting tonight and asked if I would please share his distress over the location of All That Java, along with all the other, kind of like debris that's parked back there in that United Methodist Church lot. Apparently, there's some building machines right there. Anyway, his problem is with All That Java.
So Mr. Oldham did send an email to our zoning enforcement officer, which I'm sure John will get back to him on issues that he brought forward. Yeah, very good. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Sam.
So there are 33 businesses operating in the residential district right now. So the residential district is yellow. The black is where they're operating. Many have come after 1987, when zoning laws were adopted. Is that right?
Yes, but that's not correct.
Yes, but that's not correct?
Yes.
So many of them probably have permits.
So they have permits, and they have variants.
But they went through the process that exists to do it.
Right.
The same process you went through three years ago and are avoiding now.
Exactly. Not avoiding.
You don't avoid, but...
No. This is what we're doing. This is what we're doing right now.
Okay, well, let's maintain... Excuse me. Understand. Listen. We have a person talking. I would give respect to everybody, you know, to allow them to speak, please.
Thank you. The reason... Do you know the reason why we moved so quickly?
I don't know why you're addressing me.
Okay. I'm addressing everybody, okay?
You should address the board.
The reason that we moved so quickly was because the property we were on is, you know, a new owner took over a year ago, Jonathan Cohen. You may know him. And he's operating multiple businesses there without site plan approvals. And the reason we know all of this is because we were there, and we had our site plan approval. And we were dealing with a lot. We sent an email to the planning board on March 4th. I hope that you saw that with all sorts of evidence showing what he's doing. He's manufacturing there. He's doing all sorts of things. And we wanted to get out, and nothing was done about it. So that's when we met the ministers at the church. They wanted to do this. We wanted to do this. We thought we understood churches to be exempt from zoning also. Now we know that they're not, and we're trying to move forward with this process. But the hard thing is that we're looking to you to say, what do we need to do? Do we need to get a special permit? Do we need to try to extend the zoning from, you know, either the village center district, just extend it, one or two properties? We're right at the edge. The Methodist Church is right at the edge of that. So that's where we're at.
So but tonight, you came and said you're not asking for those from the village board?
Because it's very vague. It's been very vague with what we need to do. You're supposed to tell us what we need to do.
No, the village board, we do not get involved in land use issues at this level.
We enact law.
You have to exhaust all your solutions, remedies with the zoning department first.
I can explain it.
John Fenton told us that we needed to come before you, so we're just following what John Fenton said. And that's true, right, John?
Let John Fenton speak on...
Thank you.
All right. So basically, their situation is it's a retail business in a residential zone district. There could be potential avenues they can take. If, for instance, there's a sensitivity overlay, which is right next door to their parcel. If the sensitivity overlay adopted their parcel, a sensitivity overlay allows only a few businesses. It's a business of low impact. It could be a business within somebody's home. It's just a... It's a low... Retail and service and restaurant is not a business that's allowed in a sensitivity overlay. So that would be... But if they decided to go that route, they could ask for that. But ultimately, they still need to get the village board, who can change the law, approval to change the use chart. In the use chart, the retail business, when you look down all the districts, it's only allowed in the village district and the gateway district. Business district. So what happens is in the residential district, it's prohibited. So... And again, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. So Samantha and Patrick, they've seen that there are these existing retail businesses that exist in a residential zone district. These particular businesses that are still operating today, from what I gather, is pre-existing. It's before the zoning law. And... But it's non-conforming, meaning that, for instance, the ideal example would be a liquor store that's located across from a park. Now, so it so happens is if that owner discontinued their service and let 12 months lapse, they would lose their non-conformity. They would not be able to operate any further as a retail business. And most of those businesses that exist in the residential zone district have the similar consequences. You know, if they discontinue and 12 months lapse, then they cannot go back to that type of business. It has to go back to residential or whatever uses are allowed in that district. So in this particular case, they're asking to get the same relief as these other businesses, but she's not pre-existing, and that's where the problem lies. So the only alternative that she really has is either totally move to a district that allows retail or ask the village board to change the code, the use chart. And so instead of prohibited, maybe it's allowed by a special use permit, what have you. And so that's how the judge understood it from my explanation.
Or the ZBA to change the zoning?
The ZBA doesn't have... The only people that can change the law is the village board. The ZBA... So there's the other... So the other... The last other opportunity that you would have is go in front of the ZBA and ask for a use variance, which is very tough to get, but that would be... So that would be the other alternative.
But it's very, very tough to get.
You have to meet all these...
And John, they would have to go to the planning board first.
It still doesn't work because I could speak. If they changed, if you expanded the district and you changed the use chart to allow retail businesses to operate all over the village in the residential district, which would destroy the village, they still then are required to come for a special permit, public hearing. I didn't bring the book, but page 44, and it lists the business must be internal to the building, which is why there's doctors, lawyers, psychiatrists, dentists, whatever, inside the building. It can't have anything outside that advertises that it's a building structures of any kind. Parking must be analyzed. Traffic studies have to be done. It has to be owner-occupied, whatever, because the dentist lives in his house. It's illegal, and by not coming here tonight and asking you to vote yes or no, which I'm... Thank God you did, they're trying to stall, and they'll stall and stall and keep operating illegally. They need to move to a legal place in the village. There's other parking lots around... The Double O Diner has been out of business for years. A giant parking lot in the village. Nobody's there. So we can deal with the owner of the diner. May have some red. He'd be happy. That's right. It's 100 feet from where they used to operate. Grand Crew is empty. The gallery down the block is empty. There's an empty store in the UPS mall over there. Open a legal coffee shop. Everyone come in and sit there and have coffee and chat instead of sitting in the rain on some seats on some grass in the residential district illegally.
On a church property.
That's irrelevant.
Okay, so... All right, so let's wrap this up.
Mayor, I'd like to add one thing.
Mayor, I'd like to add one thing. From the look on your face, it sounds like you never saw that complaint that we sent on March 4th. Is that true?
The complaint, I'm aware of what's going on, and we.
Did you see the complaint, did you see the complaint that we sent to the planning board?
Yes, I'm aware of what was going on, and we were updated in terms of the issues, in terms of Mr. Cohen. He actually came to the planning board and presented his plans. And he is in a district that what he's currently doing is allowable. Why he evicted all that Java, I have no.
He did not evict.
So, Ken, I'm going to intercept here, because we really need to keep it to the subject that, so I really don't want to get into all the other permutations, all right? The original request was to come before the board, as directed by the judge, and ask for special use permit or zoning adjustment. You have withdrawn that application. You are not asking for that. The board has voted and approved to not entertain, right, a change to the zoning law, okay? Plain and simple. There's two pieces to that. There's the zoning piece, which the judge directed you to do, we acted on. There's the zoning enforcement piece, which you've been directed, and the zoning enforcement officer is giving you a ticket for opening or whatever. That's on that end. That's the other part of it. We're not dealing with that. So I think we've complied with the request, and I think we're done, okay?
So we'll let the lawyers handle it?
Thank you. Thank you. Highway Department. Trustee Lewitt, I don't have a report from you. Do you have a report?
I do not have a report.
Ryan, can you turn off the phone again? I'm sorry. What did you say?
I think he said he has one.
He says he doesn't.
He doesn't.
Martha's business, right?
Dialogue.
What's the issue?
You're lagging, Rick, on your end.
You were coming, beginning the meeting, you were fine. Now you're not. So, Trustee Lewitt, if you have a report, I would like you to submit the report so we can include it in the record, okay? Thank you. Okay. Water Department.
Okay, I have some miscellaneous stuff here. I have the report. It was given, it was put in the mail slot at the last minute, so I'm just going to read part of it. I'll give it to you when I'm done. We drained, they drained and cleaned the settlement tanks on July 22nd. Brandy Nelson and I were there to witness it, because we wanted to see how the alum sludge would make its way to the lagoon. So she's going to come up with some ideas on perhaps trying to intercept the silt before it gets into the lagoon. And so it was important to have her there so she could witness this. And there were water leaks on July 30th, the real estate office in the courtyard, and on the same day, later on Ryan Cliff Road. We've had a bunch of leaks on Ryan Cliff Road, so I'm being concerned about the integrity of that water main that goes along there. On July 5th, there was a fire on Slate Quarry Road, which crashed the low pressure. It fed the Violet Hill pump station. See, what items do we have here? The water infrastructure update.
We got the report email from SandTech. I can put it up here.
Yeah. Now, they are ready, we did not get any bidders. People are busy, suppliers. There was a supply lag with the steel materials, et cetera. So we are, they are actually ready to go out to bid, using the same bid docs, pretty much, that we had before. So I, if it's okay with you folks, I would want to vote on that. As far as the new bid dates and the approximate construction timeline, if we authorize it tonight, it would go out to bid on the 19th, two days minimum for official posting. Pre-bid meeting would be on September 4th. Bids due on the 18th. A recommendation on the 20th. Special board meeting for award would be 9/24. That means something we would have to convene and execute the agreement the day thereafter. With the NTP notice to proceed on the 4th of October. That's, this would pretty much be under the same bid docs we had initially. There was an amendment, which I read, which just basically says to the subsidiaries that all the items they work on are going to be absorbed into the pay points, which protects us. It's just like a one-page change. So if it's okay with you folks, I would like to vote on going out to bid again. And we've had more positive overture from somebody we think we'll get. The schedule's more flexible than it was last time. So I should go into that a little bit more.
Can I ask a question about this? This just came in our email today.
Yeah.
So I was able to read it right before the meeting. One of the things that we were concerned about, and I'm not saying it's an issue or not an issue, but the feedback we got was, our schedule was too tight from the bid awarding to starting the construction. And this seems to hold the same timeline.
Yeah, I know.
It was received at 10/4, with construction to start on 10/4. And that was kind of the feedback we got from our engineering, that that, they couldn't mobilize that quickly to be able to execute. And that was one of the deterrents.
Right.
From our last bid. And this.
But I think that the.
This schedule applies the same thing.
But the construction commencement is not like a mandatory date. I think it's more the final completion and substantial completion, which are the days that are significant.
Yeah, I noticed the schedule is longer.
Yeah, and we were hoping that they'd probably want to work, and this is the, you know, he's working off of feedback he got from contractors also, that they might want to do the side streets during the winter. And then they have some flexibility to do Montgomery Street between May 2nd and June 19th. So that would hopefully be more attractive to people.
And it looks like this schedule also has rooted out some of the conflicts with the many events that take place in the village.
Yeah, we are, we're sensitive to that. And not only that, but it would be done before a lot of the meetings.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, we still have the Country Living Fair and.
Yes, yeah, right. But, you know, the fair, which is.
So we always have events. It's the nature of our.
But they're not busy, they're not super busy, like the events in March.
Okay. Well, my only concern was to start, bid award to start, and to make sure that that doesn't throw us out again.
Yeah, I mean, that's his calendar. I don't think those, those are not, those are approximate start dates in the timeline.
All right, so what do you want us to vote on?
I'd say we go out to bid again.
And why don't we do that, set a bid date, right? Out to bid, can we do this?
The 19th.
By 19? Don't we have to, isn't there a time?
Two days minimum for official newspaper posting.
We would be doing the, doing the legal ad, and that's, we're going out to bid on the, and then having the due date on 9/18. So yes, you'd be fine.
Okay.
And trust, just so you know, Trustee Lewitt and I are texting back and forth, so I can get responses from Trustee.
I rate that.
I'm multitasking.
Technology. So you're fine, my question to you is, editor village clerk, you're fine with the 8/19 date?
As long as I get the, SandTech is really good at getting it. We can get it out tomorrow. I'll notify them, so yeah, we should be fine.
So I'm willing to make, I'd like to get this started. I would like to make a motion that we go out to bid on 8/19.
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor of going out to bid on 8/19?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carry.
Fingers crossed. Let's get it done.
Yeah, good work.
All right. So we have one more thing on.
There's a couple other things.
Yeah.
The water quality update. So again, we had the, which is an aberrant, I like to call it, sample for this haliosydic acid, which is a disinfectant byproduct, which is something that's triggered by all the chlorination we do in the summer. So that's why everyone got a notice for the high HAA5 reading that we had. Now, what we're doing is, the reason why I say it's an aberrant sample is because it's 90.7 parts per, I think, is that trillion? That, it's got a weird symbol there. I think it might be trillion.
That is trillion, yeah.
Per liter. And.
That's good, if you have any.
So we go back and do the quarterlies, and this is half again as high as any of the other quarterly samples, pretty much, that we've had in the last 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 samples. So we had a sample right after that even, which is a bad sample, which is our quarterly. And that was less than half of this level. The month later, which is warmer weather, which is usually, in the warmer weather, you have the higher.
Higher reading.
The higher haliosydic acid. Also, in that May sample, this kind of a tandem substance, which goes along with the TOC, was really reasonable, too. So it suggests that it may have just have been a bad sample. So what we're doing is, we're petitioning the county to get it discarded and replaced by that sample that came a month later. So our engineer has written a letter to the county. Should I read that, or I'm just trying to explain what's going on right now?
I think you're doing a fair job of saying that what we're doing is, we're working with the county to, on the recommendations and the findings, based on the data, all the data that we've collected. And now we're going to take two more samples. We took one sample on August 8. We're going to do another sample.
Another sample, yeah.
On today, was the second sample.
Right.
They're being sent to two labs in parallel. And we're hoping that the county will, once we receive that data, will then vote on realizing there was an anomaly in the May reading of the sample that was taken then. Because here's the, here's the problem. Those readings carry over from quarter to quarter. So if you have a high reading in quarter two, and you don't get that reduced, it carries over to quarter three, quarter four, until your averages.
I like to think of it as a scarlet letter.
Until your averages come down. So it creates, if you have something that.
It's like an EOM.
We think is invalid, based on the sample that was used. Our best effort is to throw that sample out, so we can bring our averages into realistic, we're not trying to hide anything, and make our averages realistic to where they should be.
Where they should be, yeah.
Right? And if we do that, you know, then we can submit a statement out to the public saying, we got this, here's where we are, case closed, versus saying we have to continue. Because I do know there's calls coming in, right? There's calls coming into the village, calls coming into the water plant, you know, people concerned about water quality. And believe me, I think we all take water quality very serious. We're concerned that the water quality is the best that we can deliver and the best that we can monitor at this time. So we're working diligently to make this right. And if we don't, we now have to submit another report. So it's a timeline effect. Originally, that timeline ended on September 9th, which is not too far away. So we have between now and September 9th to realize what the county's reading is on the report done by the engineering firm. They've now agreed to extend that date to October 9th, I believe, if I remember correctly. So they gave a one-month extension, so that we have time to get the samples, analyze the samples, and then submit a final report from the county.
So, and that dovetails with what we need to do here, because we have the bid from Ty and Bond for this, and it's a three-part bid.
Right.
Basically, let me, the pay points were $1,400 for the public notice, which has been done, $5,100 for the evaluation of the data, and then the OEL report, which is a state mandated report that we're actually trying to, I'll say, ease out of, because if that discarded sample, then we don't have to do the OEL report to the extent that this would suggest. So that was $7,400. So our concern at the last meeting was the middle pay point, and the $5,100 for the evaluation of data. But we had the meeting with John Fenton and Brian and me, and we, they, our engineer was saying that the pay point two is so important, because if we elaborate in pay point two, we might be able to lessen pay point three, so.
Correct.
So what I would like to do, and again, we're trying to get this OEL report, we don't have to do it, because we're going to hopefully get the powers that be to discard that sample and replace it with a good sample. So, but I would like to get approval for this, because they're working without a contract right now and helping us. In other words, I would like to approve Task 1, Task 2, Task 3's proposal from Ty and Bond. Task 1, public notice being $1,400. Task 2, evaluation of data at $5,100. And Task 3, the OEL report at $7,400. That's an outside limit of what the expense would be. So if they don't have to do that stuff, or it comes in lower, then it will. So if I could get.
I make a motion to accept the presentation of the payment schedule to Ty and Bond, as recommended by Trustee Nunica.
I second the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Was that for a pose, or an aye? Rick, thumbs up or thumbs down?
That was an aye.
That was an aye? Thank you. All right.
So I have some other things that just came in today, you know. And it's this thing that, well, the mayor is aware of this stuff. We have, like, we have levels of chemicals that we put into the raw water. And we, there's a four-hour lag between when we put the chemicals in and when we check the end product. And we tweak it that way. We say, oh yeah, well, we should put more of a flocking agent in. And then we test the results four hours later. And then if there's something needs to be corrected, there's an eight-hour lag in that correction. But we have this thing that we used to have, which is these steel jar lab testers, which stir the product, and you get an approximate reading with your raw water. The thing about the raw water is constantly changing, because it's the Hudson River water, and it depends, and it has a lot of biological stuff in the summer, and the character, and there's rain, there's drought, there's all sorts, there's tide, and there's all sorts of characteristics of the raw water that change. So if we get the lab testing, we can approximate the amount of chemicals that we submit into the raw water and be more scientific about it. And we used to have something like this. It's still, it's, the apparatus doesn't work anymore, but it's something we used to have. So Brian actually got like three bids on this already, for a one-liter jar tester with the stirring equipment. And the best bid we had was from Phipps and Bird, and it's $2,289.48. So I'd like, the other bid was Velp Scientifica Flocculator, which didn't come with the jars, at $2,299. And then, another one that didn't come with the jars, which was, I don't have the place on this. But anyway, the best value was the one for $2,289.48 with the jars. And it's been, he called other water operators, and it is definitely the product that people use. So I'd like to get approval on purchasing this Phipps and Bird Steel Jar Tester Labster.
This money comes from the water budget, correct?
Yeah, exactly.
That was a question from Trustee Lewitt.
Oh. Yes.
Yes. I forgot the line, but.
I'm Trustee Lewitt. I'm just mad.
So you could really be saying anything.
No, it's all right here. I can send it to you guys, so that you know.
Anybody interested?
I make a motion to accept the bid for.
Phipps and Bird.
Whatever, 2,000, because I'd just like to comment, because there's. Whatever, two thousand, because, I'd just like to comment, because as Trustee Nunica mentioned, as part of the Hudson Seven Council, we've been taking and addressing these issues, and trying to work together with all of the laboratory, all the water departments that pull their water from the Hudson River. And I knew now that Brian reached out to the other laboratories to compare this, and has discussed that with them. So, I have high confidence that this is something that would be very useful, something we should implement here within the village, so. Shorten that up, I'd like to motion to approve the purchase.
I, I second.
Is it a flocculator?
No, that's one of the things that would test.
So what is, what is really what you're purchasing?
The Phipps and Bird seventy-seven ninety dash nine hundred Steel Jar Tester Labster.
How about we give you a copy of it?
Yeah.
You can have it now.
Right. Now remember, this, just so everybody knows, this, we haven't seen this, this is brand-new, it came in this evening, so it's.
Yeah, this is.
To everybody.
Thank you.
So, on the same level, there's another lab equipment, which we would do UV testing of the, of these disinfectant byproducts, so we can see that, what, if it's in, in the water at the plant, before we, you know, can test it out in the field. And this is a public health, you know, concern, if we, we can bird dog some of this stuff upfront. And, the best price we had was surpassed chemical, a price quote at one thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars for a real UV two fifty-four portable meter. And again, I think you spoke to Randy at the Poughkeepsie Water Department, that this is the thing that people use. That's the best price.
I make a motion to approve UV testing equipment.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying? So carried.
Is there a dollar?
One thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars.
Aye.
Aye?
Yeah, we got a hand raise.
Oh, I thought you were asking me if I said aye.
Okay.
Yeah, that's it.
We're good. Is that it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Waste water.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll read off the top-line numbers. Waste water treated during the month of July, four point one million gallons, gallons of sludge processed, thirty-two thousand three hundred, and pounds of sludge processed, four thousand one hundred and forty-five. Those are the, the prime numbers, and I'm actually looking at the minutes from last month, because I'll, I'll give a couple of updates. I talked about, and, it's the continuing effort to mitigate the odor, that's been impacted. I hope that means that it seems to have been largely mitigated, right?
Right.
Oh, good.
So, Ms. Lynch lives, lives in the, in the, in the woods, and was kind enough to give us some feedback, because I, I've been staying in touch with folks from the Wells Manor, and folks from the woods, and all the feedback was positive, up until about two weeks ago, folks in the woods said that they did experience a very discernible odor, but in fact, we were able to link that, and this is what we were looking for, was there something happening at the plant that day? The answer is yes, that's when we were pressing the sludge. And that is just one of those processes that is gonna generate odor, no matter what we attempt to do. Since the last meeting, we actually, our plant manager has put in another filter, and that's in the intake room, where the exhaust that draws odors, you know, from the intake, puts them outside, there's now a filter that looks like a large blue candle, and that's, creates a very sweet smell, actually, so. So, that, that remains a very much, you know, because that's a quality of life issue, we remain very focused, and I remain very much in contact with the folks. The, we still have a loose end, we have to ultimately bring to closure this matter with the apron. In a way, it's the, the experience that, these folks are also busy, and it's hard to get bids, and we're dusting off bids that were in process, I'm sorry to say, almost as much as a year ago, but we may just have to just start the process over. There is a very attractive bid out there, we just haven't been able to get in touch with the folks and say, is this still a viable number for you? And, the only other thing that I want to mention, Mr. Mayor, and to the board, is that, I'm looking at my, my grant partner over there, Donna Warner, we tried to get a grant to do a feasibility study on the composting of biosolids. And I think what I would like to do is, and we saw some really good numbers in, in our reserves, with the wastewater department, that we'd like to put out an RFP, and see if we can get a couple companies to bid on a feasibility study for biosolid composting. Oddly enough, and we made a lot of phone calls, as we were approaching that July twenty-sixth deadline, numerous emails with people at the DEC, and, and people that oversee the, the grant process. There is money, if you want to ultimately construct a composting of your biosolids. And the biosolids, that's that sludge number that I mentioned earlier, who remembers what I said? It's four thousand one hundred and forty-five pounds. And, there's funds for that, there's no funds that we can find to do a feasibility study, so I want to do an RFP, but I'll be coming to the board, you know, next month with more detail. That's it.
So my only question on it is, I agree, it's a good thing to do, does this County Wastewater Authority, I haven't heard anything from them in quite some time, who is doing a feasibility study and a ten-year outlook plan for us? Have either of you?
So, yeah, we marked up, she gave me, Bridgette gave me, is it Bridgette?
I thought it was Anne.
Bridgette, who's Bridgette Barclay?
Bridgette Barclay.
Yeah.
I think you're right.
She sent us a Tivoli's draft, and I marked it up.
Okay.
After talking to Brian and Brian. And we, we fashioned that document, this is the bid document for the engineers to do the study. And then, we sent, I sent her a draft, and then she had some follow-up questions about two or three weeks ago, and then I answered the follow-up questions after talking to Brian and Brian. So, they've got it.
My question is.
Reach out to them.
Rather than us trying to contribute and get a grant, it cannot be part of that study, that they're doing.
I'll jot down this individual's name, and I'll reach out.
Okay. We're good.
Can I have a copy of the report?
Oh, yes. Yeah, Pat, I did put it in the, the cloud, so there is a soft copy in the cloud.
The other thing is, is.
I don't know what it got.
The, the legal issue of having extratorious, extraterritorial water lines and wastewater lines, analyzing that from a legal standpoint could also be part of this grant. Because I know Rich is looking into that stuff, so, if we track his expenses on this, then we can maybe get it reimbursed. That's a separate issue.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like a motion to accept all of the reports as presented this evening.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Staying? So carried, thank you. So, Trustee Lewitt, I don't know how we're gonna do your report.
I have it.
Do you have it?
Pat, would you read this for trees?
Okay, I guess we got it.
Is that okay, Trustee Lewitt? Okay.
You're right.
Is that all right, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, it's fine. I'm gonna, do we have it on the cloud? You tell me what to put up on the cloud, I'll put it, I'll put it up.
If I go on.
I'm under tree commission. Minutes, are you reading the minutes?
No, it would be, not this, not that one. The, oh, there's two. If you open up the tree commission, and then it has all the different, all the different, um.
This one.
And then at the very bottom, it has the winning proposal.
The min, not what I have, is the minutes.
No. If you go tree commission, if you open the tree commission.
Right. I have Yarver Po, Yarver Tree.
You go all the way down to the bottom, and see the little envelope, and it says winning tree proposal.
Winning tree proposal?
Open that.
Okay.
Okay, now I'll go to what Trustee Lewitt wants me to say. Would you read this for trees? After consideration of four proposals, tree commission voted on August sixth to recommend the acceptance of this proposal from Davy Resource Group. The proposal is accepted without the custom map, but with onsite software training. For review, the cost of this work is being reimbursed to the village through the Frost Foundation. As we discussed in our budget meeting, the village will be assuming the cost of the software subscriptions after the first year. The village board of trustees should, but does not need to, make a decision about this subscription at this time. Anything to add, Trustee Lewitt?
Do we have a price?
Thirty thousand.
That was on the.
Thirty thousand.
On the cloud, if you go to the cloud, tree commission, and then winning proposal.
Oh, it was in there, in their minutes?
That's why it just opened right here. But it doesn't have the price in it.
You'd have to go to, that was there.
I looked at the bids, and I couldn't figure it out.
Make a motion to accept the Davy tree proposal.
Because there were a bunch of, it wasn't real clear with the Davy proposal, how much it was.
I wish I brought it with me, if I had known that Richard was gonna have it from the.
I have him right here. If you want to come up here, Meg, I have the village Davy Resource Group. The final price is dependent upon the final count of trees.
The price that's listed here is for twenty-five hundred trees, any additional tree that they would do would be four dollars extra per tree inventory. So, I'm still looking.
Meg, it looks like it's ten thousand seven hundred and sixty.
With the original inventory, and then they also have.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's a pretty good price.
Yeah, it's the lowest one.
It is, well, it's not, there are other things on that beside the ten thousand for the inventory, look down.
Okay.
Which one are you opening up?
Mr. Mayor, it's the Davies', and it starts at about page, I'm sorry.
Well, I have the Yarver Po tree, the Yarver View tree, and the Archwell Wild tree.
Davy.
I don't have a Davy.
It's, you know, it's listed as Ryanbeck Village Tree Inventory, you see that? That's the, the title of the, of the PDF.
Yes.
Open that one up, that's the Davy proposal, and the pricing starts at about page twenty-seven, it does start at page twenty-seven. And it's ten thousand dollars, seven sixty, for the first twenty-five hundred trees.
So here it is.
Then we have the software.
It's ten thousand.
Your licenses.
Right.
That's for the inventory itself, and it's, and it's gonna include everything but the custom map, everything else as well.
Okay, so it includes a one-year subscription.
Don't give a totem about them.
Yep.
Yeah, that's all, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Trustee Lewitt says the final price is dependent upon the final count of trees. Software training and making a management plan is important for the next grant cycle. And it says, we operate to include changes, software support. That's the notes that are on it. But it includes treekeeper software, the renewal fees.
The management plan as well is included.
And then the management plan.
The, the first year of the software is free.
It's free, that is correct.
That's pretty good, yeah.
I mean, basically, there was one other, Yarver Pro came in lower, like a twelve thousand for an inventory, but they didn't, they didn't include a management plan in there.
Okay.
So, Davies' was the second lowest that came in. There was one that came in at thirty-six thousand, that was the next up, which was much more than Frost Foundation gave us to cover this.
Right.
And then, the one above that was a hundred and sixteen thousand.
Yeah, Yarver View, yeah.
So, Davies', you know, is giving us, and I wish I had my glasses, because I can't really read this as well as I want to, but.
Do you need readers?
Yeah. Sorry.
Well, I have it up here on the screen, is this the, your prices?
Yeah, the prices.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so basically, what we would be getting from them is ten thousand dollars for the inventory, and that could go up to as much as, you know, maybe thirteen thousand, if we had a lot more trees than twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, you'd have to have a thousand more trees, yeah.
Then, so it's four dollars and fourteen cents per tree for the extra trees. Then, also the training on treekeeper, do you see that?
Yeah.
That would be eighteen hundred dollars. The unlimited telephone support, the one thousand and the twenty-eight hundred dollars for all included the first year, but those would be additional, if we wanted to continue with iTreekeeper in the future, going forward, we'd have to, you, you agreed to pay for that, the ongoing management of.
So that additional twenty, thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Right.
That would be the cost per year to maintain it.
Right, right. The management plan is five thousand one hundred dollars at the bottom, so that also has to be included in the bid. Okay, so, we're looking at, depending on the number of trees, about sixteen thousand dollars.
And we got thirty.
Yeah, it could go up more than that, it could go up to as many as nineteen thousand. Frost Foundation gave us thirty thousand, with the idea that anything that we didn't spend on this, they were willing to, and would like to help us put in some very large trees this fall, of the type that we can't put in bare root. That's how they'd like us to spend the rest of that money, so.
And so just for clarity on the software renewal fees.
The software renewal fees.
Software renewal fees, you know, it says one-year subscription, twenty-five hundred.
That's correct.
So that's an obligation of the village then going forward.
That's correct. And what, what Andy Hillman, Andy Hillman told, well, the first year of this is free.
Yeah, first year's free.
Yep.
And.
Could we pay for year two?
Depending how we bought, purchased, we can do a one-year, three-year, or five-year.
That's correct.
Sets the, sets the price.
That's right.
Five years is ten thousand dollars.
That's right. And what Andy Hillman, who wrote this proposal, said to me was, this price is locked in. So even if we continued with the software ten years out from now, with upgrades for free, it would still be locked into the same price.
And the Frost money's not available for the month, the annual software stuff?
Well, when we talked about this originally, it was decided that the village would take care of that.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not saying that we couldn't ask them in future years to support us with this, I think if it goes.
We were wondering if we could prepay year number two. We get year one free, can we prepay year two?
Well, I suppose we could.
Frost wants to pay for infras, infrastructure?
Infrastructure?
Or it's infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Not for ongoing costs.
Okay, so not for the.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's true, generally, that's what he told me also.
Right.
Not operating costs.
And you can see I'm getting this right from here.
Yeah.
So we would have to put this into the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would be a, it would be not as, I'm assuming this is for the twenty nineteen, twenty, we don't pay anything.
That's correct.
And then starting the twenty twenty, twenty-one budget, we would have to incorporate a cost into that budget.
That's correct, that's correct.
And just see what comes out of the budget.
Right. The other thing this management plan will tell us, basically, is if we do it all, what the cost of maintaining the trees that they feel either have to be felled totally or pruned would be, and the priority of those. Now, obviously, things that they don't put on the priority list might be knocked over by who knows what, but they will give us a somewhat, a budget, that hopefully we can begin to plan, in terms of maintenance of our trees, as well as just planting.
And there's one more question, on the maps, are we getting, again, the overview map, or the custom map, or both?
So, he said, all of the maps, and there are tons of kinds of maps you can get off the software, they'll all be on the computer, we can print as many of them as we want, for no extra cost, and it's not copyrighted. If we want a beautiful, big, huge map, that's the one that would cost us the big bucks.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
All right, so we're not doing that.
So, I, yeah, we decided that, we, we don't recommend that you do that, but, you know.
Deputy Mayor Lewitt reminded, we discussed adding the software subscription to the budget during our budget hearings this winter, and thought it was okay. and thought it was okay.
He's right.
That's what we're having to do, yes. We'll bring it into the budget process. Next. February.
And the other thing, just for your... As far as timeline goes, Andy Hillman said that if he was awarded the contract, they would start within the end of two weeks. That they were free at this point, and they could start this project in two weeks' time, getting together with us, and he didn't see any problem with getting it all finished by the end of October.
Cool.
That's great.
I mean, we have the grant, we have the money.
And you have the money.
I make a motion, we approve, what was it, Dave?
Davies'.
Davey Tree.
Davies' Tree for tree survey database and management plan.
Deputy Mayor Luit seconded.
Okay. Any discussion?
I would already add that if the deputy mayor was here, I know he would say, remember, board, that this queues up potential other grant money from New York State.
That's correct. And the other good thing about this, that they won the contract, is that Andy Hillman has worked with the relief organization and the Department of Environmental Conservation for years. So, if they see that we're using him, I think that's another credit in our account.
Something we didn't have.
You're gonna name drop, is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
Well, we should also name drop and thank the Frost Foundation for all this stuff.
Exactly, absolutely.
Yeah, this is terrific, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carried, very good.
My exact same.
Is there anything else that we need to talk on trees?
Did you discuss this one at your meeting at Reform Church?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Anything else on trees, Meg?
We will be... Yeah, maybe I should say this, we will be going around in August and pruning some of the recent trees that were put in, just to elude people, members of the tree commission. And Tom from the Highway Department will be pruning trees, so if you see women coming around to take lower limbs off your trees, the newly planted trees, that will be happening this month.
Thank you, Meg. No further board action at this time.
Thank you.
All right, so, trustee Rossi, I have the community development block grant.
Yeah.
In the grant committee, do you have anything else other than that?
No, Mr. Mayor, let me let you run with that. The only thing I just want to mention real fast is that, actually, Ron and Ty gave us a heads up on a potential grant for both water, wastewater. Donna Warner and I have signed up for... I registered for the webinar that takes place this Thursday. I'm gonna mention it to my fellow trustee, if he wants to join us. And actually, Mr. Mayor, you were the one who said, "Hey, does this webinar." So, we're on board for that. And, yes, please, run with the CDBG.
All right. All right, so, we're gonna move into... We started a meeting with community development block grants. We're gonna become close to ending the meeting with a community development block grant. And this community development block grant is for the 2020 cycle period, and it really is for areas where it's considered low income. Not affordable housing, low income, and where you've been sanctioned. So, I can show you a map, although they were kind enough to break out a lot of the other municipalities in very great detail. The Village of Rhinebeck, we're still a little dot on the map here. And if you can see this, I want to describe the area for you a little bit. So, this is the Village of Rhinebeck, the area outlined. And the area in green is the area that is eligible for this block grant application, right? So, if you can see the line, this is being West Market Street and then Montgomery Street. So, we're looking everything in the quadrant here, that's on that side of the village, for a block grant, for this application. The block grant has to be used for this area, and it has to be used for things that benefit the community in that area. And one of the requirements that we do for this block grant is we have to hold a public hearing to solicit input. That is a requirement for the community development block grant. And applications are due, I love this, to give us so much time. Applications are due, I believe, on October 4th.
October.
Something like that. Beginning of October, applications are due. So, it gives us, basically, a little bit of time to solicit, and then, a little bit of time to develop the grant, and try to get something that we can win with, with the county, right? And get it back into the county, which is why my discussion in the beginning, to me, was so important, because we need to figure out a way to make this work for us. So, what I'd like to do is have a date that we can have a public hearing on.
That's tight.
I know. To be able to solicit public input, get this out to the public, get the public to come in, solicit ideas. It's not to say that the board can't participate, the board can and will participate in this discussion in terms of ideas and concepts as well, but it's also to be generated by the public. And the more generation from the public, the better, so...
Could I?
Yes.
Make a suggest, because I talked to Pat about this, and I know that it was late one night, and we decided to have that short-term rental public hearing the same day that we have our board, our monthly board meeting.
Yeah.
I don't think that... I sort of did a sanity check the next day, and I don't think that's a good idea, because we have... We're gonna get either these items we have at our monthly board meeting, or the short-term rental stuff, short trip perhaps.
We can adjust the agenda to make it fit.
We have this, like, it was scheduled for 6:00.
Yes.
I know, but we're gonna have, like, you know, 6:00 to 11:00 or something like that. I mean, it's gonna be a marathon night.
Let's fit the schedule. Well, we'll try to make the schedule fit as best as possible.
You mean, change the STR?
No. Change the agenda to limit it and get through our agenda, so we can have an effective meeting, right? I personally don't want to change the date.
I was thinking maybe we could put this one on that night, and then move the STR meeting to...
The deadline on this is August 22nd, we have to have the public hearing, yeah. And if you recall, we...
I didn't know that.
Yeah, it was really hard, we did September, because it was so hard to get three of us at a meeting.
We can't even call a public hearing yet. We... It's 10 days. Is this a public hearing or a public comments section?
Public hearing, it says.
Public hearing.
We only have... We have to... We have 10 days to call a public hearing, and it's the 13th.
I know. And we have till 26th.
The 26th or the 22nd?
August 22nd.
Oh, 22nd.
Yeah.
26th, so...
Yeah.
I don't think we can call a public hearing.
Well, then, either we do it, or we nix the grant, the opportunity to go forward with the grant.
Why don't we set it, and then, Mr. Mayor, we can make a phone call, and then we can reach out to Brennan. Hey, listen, you know, we didn't meet until tonight, you know, it's...
I mean, this just came out, what, last week? I didn't get one, I got an email.
The window on this was very short, yeah.
So...
The public hearing has to be before the 22nd?
Says timeline, August 22nd, public hearing. The only thing that's... For what it's worth, that's bold print here, is the letter of intent that you're gonna do this, is October 4th, as the mayor said, and then the actual application is October 28.
October 18.
October 18, thank you, yeah. But right now, I think that we have to assume there's no wiggle room here, but maybe there is, but it's August 22nd.
Maybe we should.
I can't do a legal notice.
She can't do it.
I can't do a legal notice, it would take at least 24 hours.
I actually like trustee Rossi's suggestion, is that we go back to county and say, you know, here's... Given the rules, we need an extension, and ask for an extension.
Yeah, that's what I think.
I'm okay with asking for an extension.
Yeah, right, that's a good point, yeah.
All right.
So, here's the timeline.
I'm gonna get the calendar, because you're gonna want to set a date anyway, correct?
I think we...
We should, yeah.
If the... Well, ask it, does the board want to go forward with having a public hearing to discuss this? If the board wants to proceed, thumbs up there.
Yeah, we should, yeah.
Thumbs up there. Okay, so, let's set a date, as early as we... What's reasonable, and move forward. And then we'll... And if the county denies us the extension, at least we're trying versus not.
What's two weeks from tonight?
27.
27?
Rhinebeck Zoning Board on the 22nd?
20...
So, Thursday to 22nd is open.
Thursday, 22nd.
So, it's Wednesday to 21st. But that's not...
10 days, yeah.
It's not 10 days.
Right.
So, the suggestion was two weeks from tonight to 27th.
27, two weeks from tonight?
That's open.
I'm making a motion that we set a public hearing date for 7:00?
Okay.
August...
27?
August 27th, here at Village Hall, for a public hearing on the community development block grant to solicit ideas.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? Very good, all right.
May I just add one more thing, I just thought of it, Mr. Mayor, because, you know, one of the things that's appealing about this, and we're right to at least give it a real effort, is this would cover repairs to sidewalks.
Right.
You probably saw that.
Yes, I did.
I do want to...
But we have to solicit ideas.
Right, yes, yes. But I do want the board to know that, and trustee Luit and I exchanged emails about this, and I'm gonna speak for them, only because it's easier. But we do have a resolution for the new committee that we talked about, because Brant, trustee Nunico rightly, at our last meeting, and certainly you supported it, that, "Hey, guys, get together with a resolution of what the charge and timelines and tasks would be of the walk-bike sidewalk repair committee." And Rick and I have done that, but we just weren't presenting... We weren't ready to present it tonight, but we will have it in the September meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could I... Do you have the parameters for the C... The community development block grant?
Yes.
Can we post that?
That's a great idea.
So, people can read it?
Yeah.
And that's where the ideas would come from?
Yes. That's a great point, because people come up with certain ideas, as merit as they may be, if they don't meet the...
They don't meet the print.
Yeah.
They have to be eligible.
Yeah, they have to be...
Get into the criteria.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
We can do that. All right, so, thank you. Just for... Just so you know, I went out and surveyed the sidewalks.
In that area?
Yeah.
Well, that quadrant, I mean, it's...
Did you look at the detailed map? This is the... They had a map that blows it up a little more, so you can see the middle-income areas.
That's a pretty big swath there, yeah.
I scanned the maps, and I didn't see one for our area in the scan here.
That's why, it just would never made sense to me.
There's a whole series of them.
It almost seems backwards.
Yeah, those were...
But I think we know the area, so we don't need to belabor it.
Yeah.
We know what the area is, and we can work on defining that and putting that out.
Excellent, good.
Okay?
Great.
Okay. Moving on. Special request.
Yes.
For you, Village Park.
We have the distinguished... All the trustees you have been on the cloud, the distinguished gentleman's ride. We've discussed this at two other meetings, he's met with the Duchess County Fair. Everything has been approved with the Duchess County Fair on their side, so they don't have any issues with it.
What did Pete say about it here?
Pete was fine, yeah.
Is this... Did they start at the same spot last time?
This is the one they start at the Duchess County Fairgrounds parking area, the top of Mulberry Street, and then they just ride slowly through the village. A low-speed 30-mile motorcycle ride for classic vintage custom motorcycles.
No more than 120 of them, or something like that?
Yeah. Riders wear smart clothing. 120.
Yeah, okay.
It is September 29, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m.
I make a motion to accept a distinguished gentleman's ride.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
All right, sorry.
Opposed? Stained? Carried, okay.
He was an aye. The next one is Rhinebeck... Oh, the peddling ones, just because I had that on my list. I had four peddling permits for Porch Fest. They've all been reviewed by the village police and approved, so they've all been approved. Because we did that last year, they've been approved by the Porch Fest people and our village police, so they've been issued their permits. So, that takes care of that then.
Make a motion to pass them?
Hmm?
We don't have to make a motion to pass them.
So, but just for the record, there's Rhinebeck Crew Pedaling, Abba Falafels Pedaling, Cup Takes the Cake, and there's a fourth one, I can't remember.
Chamber of...
Chambers of Cakes.
Well, the next one, yeah. We have... Another event is the DeFaleese Fair Parking. Julia DeFaleese, she submitted the application. It's been given to John Fenton and to the village police. She did the diagram and everything. Everything's been approved by both those gentlemen, so that just means...
This is the parking area that's been going on and on every year?
Yeah.
Was it always in that last name? Has it always been DeFaleese, or...
There's three. There's DeFaleese, Trombeeney.
Trombeeney, that's the other one there.
There's three. And all three have been doing it for forever.
And all three have gone through the process?
Yes.
Right, okay.
So, I need a motion to...
Yeah, all right, I make a motion to approve DeFaleese Parking for the Duchess County Fairgrounds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? So carried, very good.
Rhinebeck Chamber of Commerce wants to hold their annual sidewalk sale August 16 through the 18. I know it's short, but they're under some new... They're under some new leadership, so... Or influx, so, we're working together to get the application for them.
I'd make a motion, we approve it, the request is submitted.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? Carried?
And the last one is Rhinebeck Interact. David Ping for the Mad Dash race.
So, I make a motion to approve the Rhinebeck Interact Mad Dash under condition to get the DOT application approved, which is a requirement.
And I've been in contact with Mr. Ping, and he's been in contact with Pete. Dave Ping asked me, as soon as I got permission from the village board and was approved, then I'll do the letter. So, as soon as he's planning on applying for the DOT permit, like, tomorrow or the next day.
Okay.
So, I've got his letter, I'll have to go. And Pete was okay with it, except the Mad Dash has our permit meeting regarding the DOT. Well, that was Pete's.
Any other motion of second?
I make a motion to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? Carried? Is that it for then?
Yes.
All right, the next thing on agenda, I would just like to pass on to the public the passing of Ward Stanley. Ward Stanley was a very active member in our community and served on the village planning board, village zoning board, for many, many years, board, village zoning board, for many, many years, until he resigned from the board in 2008. We had the honor of roasting him here, which was a very special occasion, which was great, and so I know myself, and I know many other, the community and the board are saddened at his passing, and I just want to pass my condolences on to the family, you know, in this time of grief that they have. I noticed in the paper that they finally announced that there's gonna be a memorial service September 8th at, pardon, at 2:30, which is a Sunday, and it's gonna be at the Messiah Community Center, correct? Right, so, again, if you can make it, but our condolences to the Stanley family on the passing of Ward, he was a great, great person, lovely to talk to, and we'll pay some, so thank you. All right, minutes, excuse me, 6:25 and 7:09. Any discussion on the minutes?
I already sent to our village clerk, Pat, just some, you know, typos and some couple misspellings in both, Pat, I don't know if you had a chance to see it or not, I highlighted everything in yellow that.
I did it.
Oh, okay.
I did it yesterday, so I had corrected it.
Excellent.
Based upon your recommendations.
Um.
And I took the old ones off of the cloud and put the new ones up.
Okay, I didn't know if you had done it, but that's great, thank you. I also had raised the issue that in our July 9th minutes, we do have the board voting to amend the June 25th meeting minutes, which is a special meeting, and I didn't see that amendment take place. We agreed to modify the June 25th minutes on July 9th.
I listened to it, and I changed it, that's what I had put.
Okay.
That's what I, I corrected both their.
I didn't know those corrections were made, I didn't go back to the cloud in the last.
In between some computer, major computer issues yesterday.
That's a, a fine accomplishment, thank you.
I see.
If I was aware of it, I went to Burden.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for June 25th and July 9th.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? So carried, very good. Pat, correspondence?
It's on file in my office, it's on the cloud, and it's also on our website, so everybody's got everything that I've got.
Okay, and lastly, personnel, August anniversary, it's always nice to recognize people who serve for the village, and in this case, again, it's one of our officers, Officer Pat Murphy, just a little thank you to Officer Murphy, because Officer Murphy was really the inspiration behind getting our medical drug, drug drop-off box, and working with the hospital, so not only is it 22nd year as of August 1st for serving on Village PD, he still remains very helpful in helping us improve all of the things we can offer to the village, so it's nice of him to help work on that, so thank you, Officer Pat Murphy. And that brings our meeting to a close.
Could you just announce where that medical drop-off?
Yes, so we can, we have it, we had it in the last meeting, it's in the village police department, in the vestibule area, it is, as soon as you go in the front door, it's over on the left-hand side, you just walk in, there's a door you open, drop your drugs in, drop your prescriptions in, and, and then just walk out, there's nothing you need to do, you don't need to work with our police department, it's just, it's a drop-off box, it's strictly that.
I used it yesterday, 'cause I had dog pills for my dog that no longer is with me, so I dropped them off there.
And there's a list on the front of it, what's acceptable and what's not acceptable.
Just in the jars, you know, keep them in the jars.
So I encourage, it's a great thing to have here in the village.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't realize that we had covered other business, I did have something else I wanted to bring up if I could.
Okay.
And that is the, the construction that's taking place and plans about respacing, can the board discuss that a little bit?
Sure.
What are we do, what are we doing?
So, as I've discussed with all the board members and all the village here, and you put in a little bit in my newsletter, we're moving building, planning, and zoning downstairs to where Pat's office was, we're moving our treasurer, Karen McLaughlin, over to my office, and then Pat, the village clerk, and myself will be moving upstairs, and that has yet to be decided, we're working to figure out the best plan for us in that space that's standing upstairs.
Because we did receive an email from the courts expressing concern about moving that space.
Yeah, and so I met, I've met with them, and we're under discussion, we're trying to figure it out.
Good enough.
We don't have an answer yet.
We'll bring this to some sort of a vote or something at some point?
It doesn't need a vote, in terms of, I've contacted everybody, and everybody was in an agreement, every board member.
No, 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 we spoke, and I said we should have more conversation about it, I was open to the discussion, but if you had said to me, and John, I'm holding, this is, this is you voting right now for or against us.
Well, we don't have an answer yet, now bring the final answer in.
Yeah, I just want the board to have a fair opportunity to discuss it in public, and if it's in the best interest and the majority supports it, so be it.
Okay.
I don't want to do it over the telephone, is what I'm saying.
So, I don't know, it doesn't require a vote for us to.
Okay.
Make that.
But then I want to be on the public record that my cell phone call with you doesn't count, I mean, it's.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I'd like to bring the meeting, make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 9:17.
Not too bad.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Two thumbs up over there, thank you.